Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The hour of 10 o'clock having arrived, it's now 10:15. And I can see that there is a physical quorum present. So according to the Attorney General's Guidelines and Guidance for Public Bodies on the Open Meetings Act during this period of time, I call the meeting of July 13, 2021 of the DuPage County Board to order. A physical quorum of members is physically present. I will, however, entertain a motion to permit those members, Member Ashley Selman and Member Mary Ozog, to participate remotely by video and teleconference here. So I'll entertain that motion. So moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Posenae, the ayes have it. And with that, I will call the meeting to order and ask our clerk if he'd be kind enough. Let's first move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, Pledge of Allegiance. So why don't we have the young Greg Hart? Why don't we have Greg Hart, please? Proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing as I ask the Reverend Jason Harrell from the Second Baptist Church in Wheaton, who is with us teleconference electronically, who will lead us in invocation. Reverend Harrell.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dan. I'd like to begin with the scripture. Jeremiah 29, Chapter 7, verse says, "Also seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you will too prosper." So with that being said, I'd like to open us up with a brief word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve in the capacity as leaders, as elected officials, as member of this great county of DuPage, August Body of Believers. Lord, we just ask right now that you would bless the business, bless the affairs that are on the table, that are on the agenda today. We ask, God, that you would lead and guide your people, Lord, to do the will of the people, Lord, to which they serve. We ask, God, that you would continue, Lord, to add a blessing to all those who believe in you. And Father, we just ask that you would continue to bless this great nation, bless the city of Wheaton and all those who live in it. We pray for peace. We pray for prosperity. And we pray for protection. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Chaplain.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Here.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog.
Here.
Paczowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Here.
Schwartz. Selman.
Here.
Tornatori. Anze. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And it's nice to be seated together up here on the dais. I want to move into our chairman's report, if I may. That's our next order of business. And it is really an honor and a pleasure to welcome a friend here. And I'm going to make my way to the podium, if I may. Excuse me, one moment here. So it's an enormous honor and a pleasure to recognize Argonne National Laboratory. And I'm joined by my friend, my old friend and your friend, Norm Peterson, as the Argonne National Laboratory celebrates their 75th anniversary. The lab was originally founded to harness the power of nuclear reactions for peaceful purposes. More than seven decades later, here we are. It's not only one of the most important research centers in the nation and the world, but an undeniable economic engine, driving innovation, entrepreneurship, business collaboration throughout the region, the state, the nation, the world. We are really, really fortunate to have a national lab of this caliber right here in our backyard. It is a jewel of DuPage County. And we are honored to have Argonne's Public Relations, Government Relations Director, Norm Peterson, here to accept our proclamation. So we have a proclamation that I'd like to read, if I may, please. Whereas, Argonne National Laboratory was chartered on July 1, 1946. And in 2021, the laboratory will celebrate its 75th anniversary. And whereas, Argonne pioneered the peaceful use of nuclear energy starting in 1942, revolutionized medical diagnostic tools with the first ultrasound in 1957, designed safer energy sources such as the Integral Fast Reactor in 1982, and drove electric vehicle development in 2001. Whereas, Argonne serves DuPage County as an economic engine nurturing entrepreneurial technology startups, partnering with existing companies and contributing to the county's reputation as a national center for science and technology. And whereas, Argonne attracts domestic and international industry to DuPage County to collaborate with its diverse, world-class community of talent on the cutting edge of developments in science and technology. And whereas, Argonne accelerates growth in the fields of science and technology by empowering pivotal discoveries, supporting innovative collaboration and managing powerful facilities and tools, all of which help drive the prosperity and security of the United States. And whereas, development of advanced energy storage technology at Argonne will assist the United States in achieving the goal of a carbon-neutral economy by 2050. And whereas, more than 475 students annually pursue science, technology, engineering, and mathematic internships at Argonne, which contributes to the next generation of scientists and engineers for our country. And whereas, Argonne has a distinguished legacy of discovery upon which it continues to build, advancing innovation at the international and national level. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, do hereby congratulate and honor Argonne National Laboratory for achieving 75 years of scientific excellence. I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Posenae, the ayes have it. It's approved this 13th day of July, 2021. Thank you so much for the good work that Argonne does.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank all of you. You know, it's interesting. Argonne is one of 17 national laboratories in the country. So most states do not have any national laboratories. Of the 102 counties in Illinois, one county has two. So Argonne was the first national laboratory. Fermi came a little bit later. But collectively, those two laboratories bring almost $2 billion a year of federal funding into the state, into DuPage County. So as the chairman said, we are certainly an economic engine that started out 75 years ago looking at peaceful uses of nuclear energy. Recently, we were one of the first laboratories in the entire world to recognize the SARS virus, which led to obviously a very fast development of vaccine, which certainly many of us, maybe all of us, have taken. So thank you again for recognizing our first 75 years. And we've got a good 75 and probably a number of other years to go. Thank you very much.
Okay, on the order of chairman's report, I have a few remarks I'd like to share with you. I hope, and I know you will, all join me in welcoming our new Chief Information Officer, Anthony McPherson, who's there. There he is, please. This is his first full day of county board meetings. And I'm so pleased that he's joined us. And welcome. And he's a very talented and experienced IT professional who has benefited from a variety of really substantial professional experiences, including work as a CIO in Chicago and Cook County. I believe Anthony's dedication to customer service, I've been remarkably impressed with his work since he's, you know, before even started, he was reaching out and talking to people. Team building, he believes and is dedicated to a culture of continuous improvement. And so he is an exceptional CIO. He will be a strong contributor to our senior leadership team. And again, welcome, Anthony. I also hope you'll join me as I offer kudos again. But when they're deserved and they're earned, we all like to recognize and point it out, right? So our DuPage County Health Department, once again, and all of our DuPage healthcare providers and partners. But as many of you may know and have seen, that according to the CDC, DuPage ranks in the top 2% in the entire nation, of all counties in the entire nation, with the highest percentage of eligible residents vaccinated with at least one COVID-19 vaccine dose. That's a remarkable achievement. And as of July 12, more than 80% of eligible residents 12 years and older have received at least one COVID vaccine dose, and 64% are fully vaccinated. Additionally, 98% of DuPage County residents aged 65 and older have received at least one vaccine. And this is, I think, the most remarkable. 82% of all those over 65 are fully vaccinated. So we set ambitious goals for our COVID vaccination program. And I'm really pleased with the progress that we've made. And our healthcare partners have played a pivotal role in working with us. It's just been an exemplary model all the way around. And I think we're all lucky to be part of it, frankly. But our work's not done. As we know, our case count here in DuPage remains low. But of course, with vacation season, people traveling in and out of state, we still got to be vigilant. I think the most important thing that we need to keep conveying to our community is, and especially young people and hard-to-reach populations, is the need to get vaccinated. I mean, I have conversations with folks all the time, you know? And I'm not going to get it. Why? Well, I don't know. I'm afraid. Why are you afraid? Please, it's safe, it's effective. Please, do yourself, do your loved ones a favor and get vaccinated. If anyone needs a shot or wants to organize a vaccination event, please contact our health department. Staff can mobilize their care van, which offers convenient vaccination opportunities to residents in their own communities. So we'll take it right to them. Additionally, beginning the 19th, walk-in vaccinations will move from the fairgrounds back to the health department building at 111 North County Farm Road. Vaccines will be available 8:30 a.m. to 4 p.m., Monday through Friday there. So it's been a remarkable experience for all of us. And we all know that it was stressful and challenging. But I think every step of the way, I was proud of our DuPage County government team. And I think we distinguished ourselves. And so as we look at the pandemic in the rearview mirror, it's kind of nice that here we are, sitting together. And I just sort of welcome getting back to normal, right? So in any event, thank you very much. Those are my remarks. We move on to the next order of business entitled, "Public Comment." And, Mr. Clerk, we have a few public comments? Is that correct? We have Karen Rugge is here from Itasca. And I do want to remind our public commenters that we're happy to listen to your comments. But you are asked to please respect our process and the rules. And you are afforded no more than three minutes to share your thoughts with us. We'd like to ask that you try to abide by that. We've been giving quite latitude in the past, but we're trying to be more disciplined in the future. So please help us stick with our program here. And so with that, Karen Rugge, please, Itasca.
I've been coming here for six long years. Mr. Hart, what's going on? What's happening in this room? I've never seen so many defiant people in my life. Juvenile, defiant, deaf. The lady with the aqua scarf, I forgot your name. You were here on January 14 talking about suicide casseroles. You know why people commit suicide? Because they're crushed by more powerful people. And they're left defenseless. Whether it's a brutal husband, a nasty boss, a ridiculous boardroom. Six years, you've let that nursing home get flooded out on South Elm, 144 beds. I've told you about it for years and years and years. And you do nothing. And you have no shame. No shame at all. You're breaking state statutes, breaking laws, flooding me out. Mrs. LaPlante, I never saw you before. I've seen you in your pictures. You know who Bernie LaPlante is? No? Look up Bernie LaPlante. Someone fictitiously that told the truth, but nobody believed him. They believed the liars. You've got a room full of liars in here. People that don't know what the truth is. Mr. Paczowski, how come on January 14, you went up and passed a note to the chairman on camera? You're all on camera. Then you come back and sit down. And he's saying, I don't know how many times, "Any old business, any old business." And then you're going like this, pointing at Mr. Z. Can't you speak for yourself? You have to speak through Mr. Z? Then you're bobbleheading. Mrs. O. Fitzgerald Ozog is giddy and laughing. And Jim Zayn saying, "Oh, she got her answer. She didn't like the answer that she got. I'll never like your answer, because I like the truth. I like to be law-supported in the state of Illinois. I don't like to see people brutally abused year after year after year." How dare you? You're not an engineer. You're a manufacturer. You told me you're not an engineer. I had to come here because I filled out some papers for the IPA. Keith was here that day. They screwed up. They went to the wrong house twice. Seems like whatever you asked DuPage County to do, they can't get it right. Over and over and over again. I'm going to leave you with the song. Remember, what was his name, Mr. Miracle? Zay Zay Miracle? He came up here, he was such a shy man. And he read poetry, his homemade poetry, when he was against the strip joint. I'm going to read you some poetry. I'm not going to read it. It's a song. My son was big on Tom Petty. And if that's Berlin back there, Berlin knows the truth. He knows what's going on. I never saw him before either until you swore in the New People. Didn't know what he looked like. Tom Petty. "I won't back down, no, I won't back down. You can stand me up at the gates of hell, where I'm in right now. But I won't back down. I'll stand my ground. I know what's right. I have just one life. And to keep people like Dan Cronin from pushing me around and Jim Zayn, I'll stand my ground. And I won't back down. I'll be back here in two weeks."
Next, we have Karen Daly.
Hi, Erin. For the record, it's Corinne.
Corinne, forgive me.
Corinne, Corinne sometimes has a...
Corinne. Gailey, right?
Corinne Daly, hi. I'm actually here as a fan, and I thank you all for all you do. I know how hard you work and how much detail is involved in your roles. And so I thank you for that. But I'm also here to offer a little bit of constructive criticism. So I'm commenting about the Finance Committee survey. And I've actually talked to a few of you on the phone about it as well. So I'm going to read it just so I make sure I stay within time. It's important that we're all able to trust the information provided by the board members in this room as they justify the decisions that they're making on our behalf. And recently, a budget survey was issued with great fanfare, emails, I think there was a press release, social media, et cetera. The survey is intended to gather input from citizens about priorities and setting the nearly $400 million budget that you guys manage. And from that, the board members would draw conclusions from the electorate to justify their budget decisions. And that's all fair and good. And that's great that you do that, actually. Except that that data will be unusable, or at least should be unusable, because the survey itself has many numerous fatal flaws. The first is security. We have a new IT person, so that's terrific. The survey, which is administered by Survey Monkey, can be taken multiple times by using different browsers, different devices, or putting your browser in incognito mode. I plead the fifth that I've taken it more than 10 times. But I have indeed. And so any citizen activist with a point of view would be able to have no trouble taking the survey multiple times, unlimited times, in fact. And so that alone confounds the data. And I could stop my comments there, but I'm going to go on. And second, some of the questions, not all of them, but some of them are intentionally slanted. Intentionally slanted. Were to guide the respondents to specific answers. And I understand that they were written by board members directly who had a personal point of view about how some of the topics were going to be treated. And that not one of those questions was, in fact, checked by a research professional to make sure there was no bias. Not one of them. For example, the mental health question, Pitts County versus Township, is zero context. The only people who would really know how to answer that question would have to be really diving deep into that question to answer it. In a clear attempt, this question was created in a clear attempt to create some data to negate the recent Milton Township Mental Health Board vote. Lastly, given this poorly-designed survey, any results or conclusions from these results are simply invalid and unusable. And I would like to suggest that, if they are ever presented here, that these points are made once again. The board should not communicate misleading information to support a narrative. By that definition, that would be propaganda, sometimes called fake news. And I appreciate that you're trying to listen to your constituents. But the survey is broken. And I've talked to Chairman Chaplin of the Finance Committee. But as a voter and a taxpayer, I'm disheartened by this waste. And I really ask that you pull the survey, or at least try to understand the survey results in the context of them being really not very valid. So consult with data scientists to get it right. I pulled the survey. Consult with the data scientists to get it right, and then re-release it. Because then you all can be, and maybe consult with your new IT person to make sure it can't be taken more than one time. And then you can put it to good use as you truly identify what your constituents feel about how you're spending the budgets. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ginger Wheeler.
Good morning, everybody. It's good to see all of you. I wanted to thank you for all your work. And congratulations on the vaccination rates. That's fantastic. I've met many of you in person. I plan to be having either myself or somebody that's with the Friends of the East Branch DuPage River Trail contact each and every one of you to talk more about what's going on with the East Branch DuPage River Trail and its plans for development in the central part of DuPage County in District 4. First, I wanted to thank you. I wanted to thank Chairman Cronin this morning. My group presented Chairman Cronin with over 300 pages of signatures from our petition that are in favor of building and constructing the East Branch DuPage River Trail. I wanted to let you all know that we have yard signs. You may see them dotting the county in certain areas. If anybody would like one, you can order one on our website at eastbranchtrail.org. I wanted to make sure everybody knew that this Saturday is the Intelligentsia Cup in Glen Ellen. Big bike race. They're going to be racing around Lake Ellen. And then on Tuesday, they're going to be doing it around downtown Lombard. And we will be there to collect petition signatures. Encourage everyone to stop by and say hello. I wanted to let you all know that on Sunday at 3 o'clock, we're going to be featured on a radio show in Chicago that's going to be talking about all the Chicagoland Trail networks and how the Chicagoland Trail Network is rival to any trail network anywhere in the country. And with the construction of the East Branch DuPage River Trail, I think you're going to have, speaking of a jewel of Argonne, another jewel in the central part of DuPage County. And it will be a great connector to connect more of our trails to each other, to really provide a transportation network for active transportation. I also wanted to make sure that you were aware that the trail this time did not get an ITAP grant. Those grants are very competitive. Grants for these types of projects are competitive throughout the whole country. And we, as a wealthy county, send billions of dollars to Washington. We need to get our ducks in a row in order to apply for those grants to get that money to come back to us in the form of federal transportation dollars to build this trail in the central part of DuPage County, a trail that's been on the books for over 30 years, I believe. It's been in the comprehensive plans of Duke, the county, the village of Glen Ellen, the village of Lombard, lots of the park districts, the forest preserve, et cetera. So it's been on the books for a long time as a project. Hopefully, we can get that done in the near future. Get in line, get the grants. One last thing I did want to mention to Corinne's point about the survey. I was a little disappointed. There wasn't a little bit more trail questions on the survey, but there was one. So hopefully, people answered it well. And again, I just want to thank you all for your time and your dedication. And the county is just doing great. That More magazine is amazing. And I think we should all be really happy that we live here in this wonderful place with great trails and great recreation and great people that really work to make it a good place to live. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Our last public commenter is Mark Gershon from Pulsonelli Law Firm in Chicago, representing Monti Nido.
Morning. I will make this brief, recognizing you have a very full agenda. I'm here on behalf of Eightieth Street Investments in Montonito regarding the conditional use for group quarters to allow a maximum of four additional residents at the current group home. That's at this property and has been operating for a year. This is an at-risk community and a critically important use for serving the adolescent girls who are there. This is a group and used protected by the Fair Housing Act and by your zoning code, which is saving and improving the lives of members of this community. And as shown by the expert testimony at the hearing, is not harming the surrounding property owners. You have extensive public records and expert testimony on the extended public hearing here. So I'm going to do what's very tough for a lawyer to do, but stop talking. And just say that I am available if you have any questions or comments. And thank you again for all your time and consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes our public comment. Okay, that concludes our public comment, all right? There were a couple of electronic submissions. I know that our rules efforts are studying that as part of the process, but for the time being, we're gonna read a few of these, right? How many do we have there?
So we actually have Ms. Rugge and Ms. Daly submitted online comments that are duplicated by their in-person comments. We actually have only one online submission to read.
Please proceed.
Online public comment from Erica Nelson of Wheaton. The subject is DuPage County Finance Committee Budget Survey. Comment: "County Board Chairman Cronin, Finance Committee Chairwoman Chaplin, members of the Finance Committee and members of the County Board. Thank you for reading my comments into the public record. Last month, DuPage County Budget Survey was posted to DuPage County residents. Question number two asks the following: Do you believe each DuPage County Township should have its own separate mental health board, or should the DuPage County Health Department provide a countywide approach to supportive services for persons with disabilities, mental health, and substance abuse treatment services? On June 23, I emailed Finance Committee Chairwoman Chaplin to ask for clarification on the following: What is the specific process that the Finance Committee uses to determine, develop, and approve the survey questions that are used? Are questions reviewed to assess for reliability on what you're trying to measure? As one of the leaders of the Committee of Milton Township residents who worked on the 708 CMH Milton Township ballot initiative, I would like to know how the data from this question and per the instructions on the survey, quote, 'help shape next year's budget and determine spending levels for counties' various programs will be used.' The question provides no context for DuPage County residents and assumes that choosing one of these options will provide the same services for residents. It does not. After speaking with Board Member Chaplin, I understand that members of the Finance Committee submitted questions, and if there were no objections or edits, the question was placed on the survey. There are members of the County Board who are against forming a Township-based CMH Board and propose that the County Health Department can handle the local needs of DuPage County residents in a timely and holistic manner. During our research, we found this would not be the case, and that more than 90 townships, villages, cities, or towns have successfully formed across Illinois as a local response to supporting their children, teens, young adults, and adults through 708 CMH boards. By IL State statute, a community mental health board provides non-duplicated services specific to the unmet needs of local residents. The 708 CMH Board must prepare one- and three-year plans specific to the needs for mental health, substance use disorders, and for persons with developmental and intellectual disabilities for Milton Township's 117,000-plus residents. As we presented in our fact-based outreach referendum campaign, residents of Milton Township in need of these services have been and currently are part of the state of Illinois waiting list, including the state's PUNS Priority of Urgency of Need for Services list. Puns selections are based on a person's cumulative length of time in the seeking services category. As funding is available, individuals are selected from puns and invited to apply for DD waiver services. Let me reiterate, as funding is available, Illinois residents remain on the puns list for months or years depending on their economic or needs-based situation. The DuPage County Health Department does an excellent job providing services and care to support the needs for the most at-risk with Medicaid and Medicare plans. This does not cover all residents in DuPage County requiring support and are not the only services that the County Health Department delivers. Thank you, Board Member Chaplin, and Board Members Deacon Garcia and Akoff for meeting with Mr. Murray and me. To be clear, a 708 community mental health board is not another form of government. It is a proven locally-based board under the auspices of a legal township that, in collaboration with local providers, ensures that preventive and therapeutic programs are accessible for all residents in the community. In Milton Township, we estimated a $550 per person for providing reactive mental health services. Our goal for this newly-established 708 CMH Board is to provide services before they become a personal crisis or just another number on the waiting list. I'll meet with any County Board member to offer my insight and examples of the positive individual and community outcomes of a 708 CMH Board. Erica Nelson, Wheaton County Board, District Four. That ends the public comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Deputy Clerk. That concludes our public comment. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who is the motion?
Zay.
Zay, and then Chaplin.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Akoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. On to the order of finance, Member Liz Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. So by way of committee report, I did wanna mention that I did speak with Corinne Daly and Erica Nelson on the phone, and I had really great conversations with them. What I thought was really great is they just didn't complain about the survey, but they gave us ideas of how we can enhance it and make it better for next year. So I look forward to working with staff and, you know, talking about ways that we can, you know, make that budget survey better for next year. And we also had our American Rescue Plan funds allocation, first funds allocation meeting this morning. So we did the board, the Finance Committee had general consensus on the county projects and the countywide elected official ARPA request. So we're making progress, and it was a really great meeting. So with that, I will move on. FIR 03321 Resolution Amending Amount in the Adult Reploy, Redeploy Illinois Program Grant, Intergovernmental Agreement from $350,268 to $313,472, a reduction of $36,796.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Akoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 034121 Resolution Acceptance of an Extension of the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program HHS Grant, Intergovernmental Agreement Number 2224028.
Motion and a second. Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 034021, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 Response, the amount of $6,688,51.
Been a motion.
Second most favorable roll. Oh, did they? I didn't hear that.
I know we wanna move it along, but we do have to observe some process here. So there's been a request for leave. Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 034221, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Department of Human Services Supportive Housing Program Grant, the amount of $296,416.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
I move approval of FIR 033021, Resolution Additional Appropriation for the Coroner Certificate Fee Grant, amount of $3,922.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 034521, Resolution Budget Transfer 713, 2021, various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman, and I will be pulling item H4 today, so.
Okay, with no objection, leave of the body? Yes, please. So item, the budget transfers item is pulled, did you say?
No, no, the resolution concerning the public comment.
Ah, okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Fabulous. Okay, well, that concludes your report on the order of finance. We move to the next order of business, the Ad-Hoc Fine Arts Committee. Member Lynn LaPlante.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I move to approve FIR 0339-21 Resolution, Recommendation for the Approval of an Agreement Between the DuPage County Fair Association and the County of DuPage for the Use of the DuPage County Fairgrounds for a Fine Arts Festival.
Second. It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, okay. Member Renahan seeking an opportunity to discuss this matter.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, everyone. I just wanna make a real quick comment on this contract, because to me, it goes far beyond a real estate agreement. We're really getting into a private citizen's gonna be contracting on behalf of the board for something, getting into commodities. And I just, I would feel more comfortable if this would be run through procurement, which it has not been. So for that reason, I did vote no in finance. It would be a no again, but I just wanted to give my reasoning. I mean, I like that we have this committee. I think there's great focus, but I'm just not, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable with this policy, how this is being approved.
Okay. Thank you, Member Renahan. Anyone else seeking recognition for purposes of discussion on this matter? Seeing none, hearing none? I'm looking online here. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, is there? Yes. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
No.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
No.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Nope.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
Diciani.
Aye.
Akoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
And Kuduski.
Aye.
There's 14 voting aye, four voting nay. A shocker. The resolution will be adopted. We move on to the next order of business entitled Development. Member Sam Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I move approval of DCO 4821, Ordinance Z2123. This is a motion to approve a conditional use to allow a change for use of a group home from group quarters to increased occupancy from eight to 12 unanimously passed at ZBAN Development.
Second. Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the... Oh, forgive me. Member Desart.
I'm gonna be a no vote on this. I've met with more than a dozen neighbors in this neighborhood. This is a, this is a neighborhood, obviously, in unincorporated DuPage County with huge, like, five-acre lots, and it's a quiet family neighborhood. Because it's unincorporated, there are no streetlights, and there are no sidewalks, so children ride their bikes or play in the streets. I have, again, talked with dozens of neighbors in this community, and I've also talked with Paul Haas and Leslie, so I know this is permissible, but it's not ideal for this neighborhood. Since this group home moved into the community, there have been countless emergency calls to this home, countless ambulances called to this home, runaway teens from this home, and more police activity, and so much traffic in and out, and in and out of this group home neighborhood, that kids are afraid to ride their bikes in the streets now, and parents are afraid to let their kids out because of fear of runaways from mentally unstable people. So on behalf of my constituents in the Eighteenth Street, in the Eighteenth Street neighborhood, I'm gonna have to be a no vote, because this home has already caused so much chaos to these constituents. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none? Has there been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk? Please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
No.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
Diciani.
Aye.
Akoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
And Covert.
Okay, there's 15 voting aye, three voting nay. The resolution is adopted. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and move to approve DCO 49-21, Ordinance Z2132, to approve a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain closer than 10 feet from the interior side property line.
Second. Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Akoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
And Covert.
Okay, there's 15 voting aye, three voting nay. The resolution is adopted. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and move to approve DCO 50-21, Ordinance Z2133, a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than 30 feet from the corner side property line.
Leave. Leave is granted. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and move to approve DCO 52-21, Ordinance Z2135. This is a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to deny a variation to allow a ground-mounted solar panel and storage shed in front of the front wall of a home, and a variation to reduce the front setback for ground-mounted solar panels and storage shed from 30 feet to approximately zero feet. The Development Committee did recommend to approve this, therefore requiring a three-quarter or 14-vote majority for this to pass.
Second. Been a motion and a second. Leave is granted. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, based on the fact that it needs 14 votes, I think a roll call may be more appropriate.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Kuduski seeking recognition.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DCO 54-21 ordinance Z2139, zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than three feet from the rear property line.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Leave is granted.
Mr. Chairman, based on the fact that it needs fourteen votes, I think a roll call may be more appropriate.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Kuduski, seeking recognition.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Wang did show up at our Development Committee meeting. I think he had a hard time maybe with the hearing officer and how he articulated his position, but based on the information that was presented at the hearing, his backyard is completely wooded. He could not put the shed with the solar panels back there. The only place he could really put it on his property was in the front where he's asking for it, that would get the sunlight for the solar panels. Nobody can see it on either side. Nobody complained about it, so I think based on what was submitted at the zoning hearing, I think the evidence is there was a hardship and that it should be allowed. Hence, that's why I voted at Development, because we did vote unanimously at Development, but we do need fourteen votes today. Thank you.
Okay, so forgive me, yeah. So, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Rennahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of HHS P319-21, contract with Johns Healthcare for rental immersion simulation mattress system, August 9, 2021 through August 8, 2022, for the care center, not to exceed thirty thousand.
Leave is granted.
All right, thank you. I move approval of authorization for overnight travel. Information and referral administrators chair of IVCA board to meet with IACA regarding IVCA transition on fiscal issues and policies in Springfield, July 12, 2021, five hundred and eighty dollars. CSPG grant funded.
Leave is granted.
Quick question.
Oh, forgive me.
This thing we're approving for the travel, is it, the person already left and is down there?
Yeah.
And stayed last night, and now we're approving it today?
Yeah. Wonder if they'll be able to check out of their hotel?
Yeah, again, we didn't have that this point. We had another one this morning, but I'd just like to get these things to us in advance before we vote on them.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Member Kuduski?
Yes.
We didn't have time to get this to board before the travel, but it did get approved by HHS before the travel, which I believe that's what the travel policy calls for. It has to go to parent committee before the travel starts.
Thank you.
Say, "Thank you, Mary Keating."
Thank you, Mary.
It's kind of nice. Okay, so, did we approve that item? There's been a motion, a second request for leave. Leave is granted. That concludes the Human Services Report. We move on to the next order of business, Judicial Public Safety. Member Rennahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPSR 305-21. This is an IGA with the Village of Wayne for Police Services.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Rennahan.
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP 6-21, a contract with Dr. Elizabeth Donigan for evaluation of offenders that are referred by the court, August 19, 2021 through August 18, 2022, not to exceed fifty thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Rennahan.
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP 306-21, contract with Ray O'Hara to provide ammunition for the sheriff's office, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Leave is granted. Member Rennahan.
All right, thank you. I move approval of JPSP 309-21, agreement with the Circuit Court of DuPage County and Penny Canova for Family Violence Coordinating Council Coordinator, July 19, 2021 through June 30, 2022, not to exceed thirty-two thousand twenty-five dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Rennahan.
All right, thank you. I move approval of JPS CO 496-21, amendment to resolution JPSP 302-19, Salco Partnership DBA Verizon for the Circuit Court Clerk and Judge's Office, extending period through November 30, 2021, for an extra four thousand dollars.
Leave is granted.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we are pulling item H.
Item H. It's table, yes. So, with leave of the body, Member Rennahan seeks to table, seeing no objection, hearing none. Your request is granted. Very nice. That concludes your report. A very fine report. On to the order of public works. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank Public Works and Facilities Maintenance for their very rapid response to a broken generator last week. The building was not air-conditioned for a while, but they got it back up as quickly as they could, and I appreciate that. Moving on, I would like to move for approval of PWR 034421, Green Valley Landfill Leachate Agreement between Waste Management in Illinois and the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
And LaPlante.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Ozog. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPSR 332-21, resolution execution of an IGA with Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System with the Homeland Security and Emergency Management with regards to Illinois Transportable Emergency Communications System.
Leave is granted. Member Rennahan.
Thank you. I move approval of JPSR 331-21, preferred health system agreement with DuPage County and Northwestern Memorial Healthcare for Inmate Medical Services, August 1, 2021 through July 31, 2024, with the sheriff.
Leave is granted. Member Rennahan.
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP 6-21, a contract with Dr. Elizabeth Donigan for evaluation of offenders that are referred by the court, August 19, 2021 through August 18, 2022, not to exceed fifty thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Rennahan.
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP 306-21, contract with Ray O'Hara to provide ammunition for the sheriff's office, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Leave is granted. Member Rennahan.
All right, thank you. I move approval of JPSP 309-21, agreement with the Circuit Court of DuPage County and Penny Canova for Family Violence Coordinating Council Coordinator, July 19, 2021 through June 30, 2022, not to exceed thirty-two thousand twenty-five dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Rennahan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we are pulling item H.
Item H. It's table, yes. So, with leave of the body, Member Rennahan seeks to table, seeing no objection, hearing none. Your request is granted. Very nice. That concludes your report. A very fine report. On to the order of public works. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank Public Works and Facilities Maintenance for their very rapid response to a broken generator last week. The building was not air-conditioned for a while, but they got it back up as quickly as they could, and I appreciate that. Moving on, I would like to move for approval of PWR 034421, Green Valley Landfill Leachate Agreement between Waste Management in Illinois and the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
And LaPlante.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of PWP 031221, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Ashland Lock &amp; Security Solutions to provide locksmith services, maintenance, and installation as needed for county facilities for facilities management for a two-year period, July 14, 2021 through July 13, 2023, for a contract total amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand five hundred seventy dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
I move to approve FMP 031321, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Nolan Sales Corporation to furnish, deliver, and install interface carpet and flooring as needed for county facilities for facilities management for the period July 14, 2021 through April 14, 2025, for a total contract amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Contract pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act.
Jeez Louise. And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
And LaPlante.
Okay, so, we've just waived the first reading requirement. Now, we're considering the underlying resolution. Member Ozog, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve PWO 005721, acceptance of the substantive
Aye.
Kuduski. Ann LaPlante. Okay, so we've just waived the first reading requirement. Now we're considering the underlying resolution. Member Ozog, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve PWO zero zero five seven twenty one ordinance acceptance of the substantive and technical changes to chapter thirty-six of the DuPage County Water Supply Distribution and Wastewater Treatment Ordinance.
Then a motion and a second. There's a request for leave, and leave is granted. So thank you, Member Ozog, a very fine report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If we move on to the next order of business entitled Stormwater, and that means, Member Jim Zay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I move on SMR three twenty-eight twenty-one, recommendation for approval in our government agreement with the county of DuPage and Addison Township Highway Department, Schick Road drainage improvement project.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Ann Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Members Zay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR three twenty-nine twenty-one, recommendation for approval into intergovernmental agreement with county of DuPage and the village of Westmont for the sixty-first street and Kubner Road Basin retrofit water quality improvement project, amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-five cents.
And a motion and a second. Request for leave. Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zay. Fine report. Onto the order of technology. Member Ashley Selman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we did in finance, I'm going to yield to my vice chair, Member Hart, who's been chairing this committee, and we're working together to coordinate, handing it back over next month. So, Member Hart, please.
Thank you, Member Selman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo what the chairman said earlier, just briefly under committee update and welcoming Anthony McPherson. We're really excited to have you on board and looking forward to working with you. Okay, so moving on to item A, I'll enter, excuse me. I move on TEP three twenty-one dash twenty-one, ratification of an emergency procurement with GHA Technologies for the procurement of laptops for various departments for IT.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Ann Garcia.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on item B, a change order, TEP thirty-one A dash twenty-one, amendment to resolution TEP thirty-one dash twenty-one, issued to Tyler Technologies for the procurement, implementation, and maintenance of an integrated property tax solution for the treasurer, county clerk, supervisor of assessments, and IT to enable the Tyler cashiering IAS World Field mobile software options and increase the contract amount by two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Request for leave. Leave is granted. Okay. Thank you, Member Hart. Thank you, Member Selman. We move on to the next order of business entitled Transportation, and Member Don Pachowski.
Move to approve DTR three three four dash two one, an awarding resolution, performance, construction, and engineering for Kearney Road Dam for an estimated county cost of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Pachowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTR three three six twenty-one, an awarding resolution, Thorn Electric Inc. for traffic signal improvements from Gary Avenue to St. Charles Road for an estimated county cost of eight hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Leave.
Leave is granted. Mr. Pachowski?
Move to approve DTR three three eight dash two one, awarding resolution to Hurley Mid Continent Company for improvements along St. Charles Road for an estimated county cost of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars.
Leave is granted, Mr. Pachowski?
Move to approve DTR three three seven two one, a resolution authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute a letter of understanding between the county of DuPage and Illinois State Highway Authority for the reconstruction of York Road from Gateway Road to Devane Avenue, a hundred percent county cost, toll rate credited county, three million, sixty-four thousand dollars, as part of the Elgin O'Hare Western Access Program.
LA State Toll Highway Authority, I think.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just kind of got a little backed there.
Yeah, it's all right. There's been a motion and a second. Request for leave. Leave is granted. Mr. Pachowski?
Thank you, Mayor Chairman. Move to approve an amendment to DTR three fourteen eight twenty-one, issued to RW Dunton Company for Milton Township Road, two twenty, twenty twenty-one road maintenance program for Skriebner's Air.
Leave is granted.
Move, move to approve DTP three oh seven dash twenty-one, a contract to Rush Truck Centers of Illinois to furnish and deliver eight tandem axle six-wheelers with snow and ice equipment for the Department of Transportation for a cost of one million, six hundred and sixty, sixty dollars and eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP three oh twenty-one, a contract to Vermeer, Illinois, to furnish and deliver one nineteen-inch capacity brush stripper for Department of Transportation for contract not to exceed eighty-seven, eight, eighty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Leave is granted, Mr. Pachowski?
Move to approve DTP three sixteen twenty-one, a contract to Superior Asphalt Materials to furnish UPM Batum's Culls Patch as needed for Department of Transportation for an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand dollars.
Leave is granted.
And last thing, Mr. Chairman, move to approve DTP three seventeen twenty, a contract to Triangle Fabrication of Body Ink to furnish and deliver forest America repair replacement parts as needed for a contract not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Pachowski. A very fine report. Onto the next order of business. Having concluded our committee reports, we move on to the next order entitled Old Business. Old Business. Anyone seeking recognition on the order of Old Business? We have Member Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just didn't have a committee update today, but I felt it was important to give the, the board members an update on our recent reinvest DuPage program. Of course, that portal opened on Monday, the twenty-eighth, at nine AM and closed at two, and the number of businesses seeking relief was six hundred and twelve. The total dollar amount requested was twenty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-three. The reviews on all the applicants have begun, and the first round of recommended applicants will be brought to the county board on August tenth for approval. The tentative businesses recommended for approval are sixty-one, with a total dollar amount of around two thousand, five hundred dollars, and we've got a great mix of businesses. Mr. Badalov and I had a great conversation yesterday, and I think when you look at the list of businesses, it really is our mom and pops, and a great list of businesses that we wanted to help. So it's too soon to tell the rejection rate, but I wanted to give everyone an update.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Did I see Member Rennahan? Were you seeking recognition on the order of Old Business? Oh, forgive me. Member Ozog? I knew that. I have her on my list. Yes, Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is old business, but I want to thank community members Karen Daly and Erica Nelson for their comments today about our current budget survey. I have spoken with Ms. Nelson about this. I personally studied survey research. I've written surveys. I've conducted surveys, and I think it's time for the board to consider hiring a consultant. I don't think this would be a large expense. We need a neutral party to develop these questions so that we can get some really good, unbiased feedback from our community. The current survey, the bias is really implicit that various questions are leading people on or not fully discussing the entire issue. So I think this is really going to be important next year if we're going to continue doing this. Obviously, there's a great many flaws, in particular, the fact that you can take this survey numerous times. So the, the bias is, is very difficult in this, any results we get back. So I'll be speaking with Finance Chairman Liz Chaplin about this and seeing what we can do about having a consultant formulate our questions, certainly with board input, but doing this professionally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see Member Chavez, you were seeking recognition?
Yes, sorry. I just had a correction. It was brought to my intention that I said the wrong number. Tentative businesses recommended for approval are sixty-one in total, with a total dollar amount of two million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Yeah, it seemed a little low.
You know, slight difference there. So I thought it might.
They really are mom and pops.
I thought it might require a correction, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else seeking recognition on the order of Old Business? Member Grant Eckoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to amplify a, a public comment that Dave Clark made at finance today. He was talking about the fact that the DuPage County Bar Association is going to put together a collection of attorneys who are going to voluntarily assist judges in the eviction courts, mediate the disputes between landlord and tenants. The eviction court's supposed to be an expedited process, but the problem is that too many people come into that court not knowing what the rules are and not knowing what the law is, and it causes in some, at some point, a lot of consternation for the judge, because I know the judges want to make everybody know what's going on and have a full understanding of the situation, but they also have to get through the court call, and as we know, the eviction court process is probably going to be clogged for the next two years. So this is an example where the bar association, through its attorneys, are working to help the system, working to help pro se litigants, and I think too often attorneys get a bum rap for some of the things that they're perceived to doing, and I just wanted to tout our bar association and attorneys in general for stepping forward and putting forward free services.
Very nice, Member Eckoff. Yeah, kudos to the bar association, no doubt about it. Further discussion on the order of Old Business? Old Business? Anyone, anyone seeking attention? No? We move on to the next order of business entitled New Business. Looking forward. New Business. Member Desart?
Thank you, Chairman. I have agreed with Member Zay, not once, but twice today.
Oh, my God.
Twice today, and I really did like, like his idea and want to underscore his idea. I'd like staff to work on how much it would cost to open up that closed part of the care center and refurbish that part of the care center as well, and what it would take to, you know, what the revenue would be to move people into that, into that old section that would now be refurbished. I really want to take a look at that as kind of economic development for the county. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Member Rennahan, you might have some thoughts about that?
Yeah, I don't agree with you on that one, but I feel compelled to say something. You know, the care center right now is not at capacity, and so it really doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense to redo the other part when we really need to focus on what needs to be done. And once we do that, hopefully so many more people are going to want to come, then maybe that's the next step. But, you know, if you, sometimes you don't know what you kind of don't know, and right now we can fit a lot more people in there, but it just, we need a little spick and span and fix it up.
Further discussion? I think Member Chaplin, followed by Member Rutledge.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chairman. I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a finance special call at two PM today, so I will see everybody after lunch.
Fabulous. You're providing lunch?
I said I'll see you after lunch.
Oh, darn. Member Rutledge? Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. I too want to, I, I had my hand up for finance. Time got cut